Let's call the meeting order and please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Councilmember Wong is absent. Councilmember Norby?
Here.
Mayor Mongi?
Here.
Can you motion adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Move to Councilmember Schwer? Second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Cole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Presentation, proclamation.
Alright.
Cool one. This is, Brian's the dog lover of the group, for sure.
Yes, yes.
We asked, we did ask if they wanted to come and bring their pups, but we didn't see anybody that came with them, so.
I know.
That would have been fun.
That would have been. So, we're declaring National Therapy Animal Day in North St. Paul, whereas there are thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams, serving the communities across the United States. Whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. And whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. And whereas therapy animal teams in the city of North St. Paul play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. Whereas, these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. And whereas, we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming pet partners volunteers to help the community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. Now therefore, on the behalf of the City Council and the City of North St. Paul, Mayor Mongi, Mayor of the City of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do here proclaim Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, a National Therapy Animal Day in North St. Paul, and encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, our mayor publicly salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. Proclamation approved this 16th day of April 2024.
Very much. Appreciate it. Consent agenda.
Move on to the consent agenda. Item A, April 2nd, 2024 workshop minutes. Item B, April 2nd, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $1,110,998.77. Item D, HRA claims of $3,153.69. Special event permit for the sanctuary church. Item F, resolution approving artist agreements for Project Snowy. Item G, resolution accepting donations for March of 2024. Item H, building permit report, March of 2024. Item I, berwalled property conveyance corrective deed and resolution.
Thank you very much. Anybody want to pull any? Okay. I do like to comment, though, the sanctuary church, their building's looking really nice over there in Oakdale, so it's glad it's really coming along nice.
Yeah.
Glad to see they're, they're joining us over here in North St. Paul for things, so that's awesome.
Yeah.
Alright. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Open to the public at, is that what you're doing first, next? Okay. I saw him come up, I thought maybe I was a little off. Alright. Three minutes. John Schmal? Six thirty-nine.
Good job. Evening.
Evening.
Council.
Hi, John.
Hi.
John.
Hi. You all received in the mail just recently your gas bill, and in that gas bill was a layout of what happens with a real utility and what they have to go through in order to get a rate increase. And it's meetings, and it goes on for over a year. Here in North St. Paul, in December, we go, the new rate will be. Those in favor, say aye. Aye, 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 aye. And there it is. You never get any input, you don't get any layout of what the costs are going to be, what everything is causing the rate increase, it's just boom, you get a rate increase. But a real utility has to go through and justify that. Just want to make you aware of that fact. It's a real process that a real utility has to go through. On the other side, tonight, you had a presentation on the budget. And I want to thank Councilmember Norby again for saying, what's this? And that had to do with the $1.1 million in overcharging electric utility users in North St. Paul. Some in Oakdale, some, some in Maplewood. And that was, well, it, we just made a new fund. What the heck? Just make a new fund, then we can overcharge from the electric users, pull that extra money out of the electric utility, and say, this is the source. But it's not a general fund item, because we made a new fund item, and it's called Fix the Street item. But any other city in this world has to keep the, keep, the keep-up of streets and other things like that as part of the general fund. But we have this other source of money. It's called the Electric Fund. Overcharge the utility users, it's too much, and then we can just draw it out. Why don't we just set up a new fund, let's say, for Public Works? New fund, not general fund, Public Works Fund. And we'll just overcharge again on the Electric Fund, and take the money from there, and we'll run the Public Works Department. It's a wonderful, uh, smoke and mirrors, is all I can call it, that you guys run. Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Alright, Bob. Peterson, how are you? Welcome.
I've been in one of these meetings before, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Welcome, we're gentle.
Yeah. Just your address, if you don't mind.
Two-two-nine-six Indian Way.
Okay.
The reason I showed up is because it's been shared with me how much it costs to run our community center. And it sounds like it's underused for the kind of money that we're paying for it. And I think, when you're going through the budget and trying to cut some costs, maybe it's time to cut out that community center. And I'm, I'm a simple man, and that's as simple as I can say.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it.
Don't hesitate to come back.
You'll hesitate or you won't.
There you go. Alright, we'll call, anybody online or anything like that? Okay, thank you. Then we'll close the public meeting here at six forty-three. Alright, thank you.
City business action items and recommendations. We have one item up. The 2024 pavement management project, City Project Number 24-01. Receive bids, award contract, and authorize professional consultant services. And Morgan's making his present.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item before you tonight, by resolution, in large part is to consider the bids and award a construction contract for the 2024 pavement management project. This is, in large part, the improvement of streets and roads, although there is some minor utility work included in the projects, mostly just resetting castings and manhole covers that might be serving utilities within the streets. But just to review the scope of the project, so, within the base bid, it was included Sixth Street North from South Avenue to Castle Avenue, Eldridge Avenue East from Eldridge Court to Seventh Avenue East, First Street North from Holloway to Second Ave, and Margaret Street from Holloway to South Avenue. As well as recommended for award here is Alternate One, which is Charles Street North from Thirteenth to Seventeenth. You may recall from the last time I presented to council, when we were going out for bids, that we had built in a base bid and then a couple alternates, knowing that we might need some flexibility to be able to award a contract that lands within all of the different funding sources as budgeted within the budget. So, funding sources are not only just for the streets, but as I mentioned, there's some minor utility work, so the sanitary sewer or wastewater utility fund is a funding source in addition to street funds. Also, the water fund and the surface water or stormwater fund as well, too. So all those funding sources together have budget caps and limitations within the budget, and we had to compare all the bid results to make sure we understood what was the most project that we could recommend award to the City Council, and that is the base bid plus Alternate One, so those streets that I outlined just previously. There were, sorry, we had some technological difficulties earlier. There were five bids received when they were opened. The bids came in, or the low bidder came in about 12% below the engineer's estimate. The engineer's estimate was about the same as the high bidder, and the low bidder was Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation with a base bid of just under $1.3 million. As I mentioned, staff is recommending award of the base bid plus Alternate One. Alternate Two, which included Cowan Place from Seventh Street North to Sixth Street North. It's very likely that if current budgeting and capital improvement planning kind of holds where it's at right now without any reductions, that that Alternate Two, that Cowan Place East, would be improved next year within the Public Works program for, for street improvements that year. And so, we're just kind of delaying that by one year. But Public Works, in reviewing kind of the bids and what we've got here, are satisfied that this is the best possible recommendation for award a contract to council to consider at this time. So, there is a resolution in your packet for consideration to award the construction contract for the base bid plus Alternate One in the amount of $1,504,675.05. And WSB has provided a construction services proposal for inspection, quality control, materials testing, as per normal improvement projects, I guess, in the past, and we have secured the city's main construction inspector that they've used the last several projects, in Mark Lynch with WSB. So, together, there's two separate actions for the council to consider. One would be that resolution to accept and award a construction contract, and two would be to approve that construction services proposal for the 2024 pavement management project in the amount of $190,119.50. With that, I will stand for any questions the council might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have none.
Okay.
One question about Alternate Two. Sorry, my internet's not working. Will the delay of the, my understanding is Cowan is very close to the work area. Will the delay of that to a different project increase that cost significantly because of the area?
Sure. Councilmember Norby, mayor and council, it's a fair question to ask. Right now, the construction cost index is tracking at about 2.7, call it maybe 3% or slightly less inflation per year. But it's difficult to say exactly what the bids might be, you know, next year with, on the odd years, what Public Works program is within the capital improvement plan is, are smaller projects. And so, I mean, we could get just as competitive pricing, and it could offset that inflation, or it could track with that inflation, we really don't know. But I think that, you know, just a normal amount of inflation would be all that would be expected at this point. Maybe there's some economies of scale with a larger project. But the one good thing is that, based on the review of Public Works, and certainly myself, as we were looking at all the different alternates and the different ways to break the project up, Alternate One is in more dire need, if I can use that word, for improvement. And so, Public Works was really not comfortable delaying that by a year, but they are comfortable with Cowan maybe getting one more year of life out of it. So even though there might be a slight increase in cost, I think the risk there is lower that we might have some significant problems from a maintenance standpoint by waiting that year versus waiting a year for Alternate One, for example, and not including that in this project. So that was an important consideration for Public Works.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do the first motion you'd like.
I guess that would be a motion, and second, to approve the resolution to accept and award a construction contract for the base bid and Alternate One for the 2024 pavement management project.
Can I, a motion for that?
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Cole?
Second.
Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, part two.
Part two would be a motion, and second, to approve a construction services proposal for the 2024 pavement management project by WSB.
Yep. Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Schwer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, with that award, just for the public and for the council, we do have, we are tracking with the gas company, Excel Gas, and they are doing some work in and around some of these streets, so we want them to get out of the way. But as soon as we can confirm the contractor's schedule, get contracts signed, I think it's fair to say, and we'll do some public engagement as well, too. We're going to have an open house for the residents, or at least invite the residents to learn more about the project and what to expect. But I think I would like to anticipate starting to do some preparatory work out there in mid to late May, I think, so I think that's realistic. That's what we'll hope for.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, reports from city manager and departments. Fire departments are working on then some boat training of their new boat out there on Silver Lake. It's unfortunate that that's where we're at, but they now have their ballistic vests in, that they train with and have on hand for certain situations. Public Works has got the full staff for their seasonal help, which is great. Student Built House on Second, or Student Built Houses, they're what, painting now? Nice. It's coming along. Second round of sweeping after our late snow. Been working on the MS fours. They had DOT training. Somebody from the State Patrol came down and showed them how to, you know, what they would look for if they were to pull one of our vehicles over to inspect it, to make sure they're compliant. And they're finishing up, finished up with the WELL-5 rehab. Finance, been working with Dan, working on budget discussions. Community developments, getting fence ordinance update. They're working on the RFP that came in for the parks of the Third Street, McKnight Field, and First and Seventh Avenue for that. Some park ideas. Electric finished up the, or is finishing up, the Chippewa project was started a couple years ago. That was due to supply line chains issues. And they're also doing the planning for the Jennifer Court area, or Jennifer Lane area, as well as, there's still work to do over at the, on the Lily project for removing that overhead system. So tomorrow night, our city engineer, Morgan Dolly, will be here from six-thirty to eight, working on the water service line, having the open house with the public to show them what to look for, for their service lines, what's it's made out of. The public can come in and find out about that. They can also set up an appointment to have Public Works go out to their house and do that for them. That information is online. That's all I got.
Thank you. Alright. Reports, councilmember commissions and committees. Councilmember Norby?
The Planning Commission met at the beginning of this month and had another wonderful conversation with fences. The behind-the-scenes work that some of our staff really put in to make this go forward is truly amazing. There, I believe they have the fence ordinance condensed and usable for most of our citizens. I believe the next step will be the open house for that ordinance change, and then it should be coming to us in about a month, I would say.
Nice. Appreciate it. Thank you. Councilmember Schwer?
I do, and I have an update. We have our meeting next Wednesday here in council chambers at six-thirty.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cole?
EDA update. The EDA meeting originally scheduled on April 9th was moved to this coming Tuesday, the 23rd, at four o'clock here in chambers. EDA is still looking for anyone interested in becoming a member of the EDA. I don't know, I think there used to be something online. Otherwise, just call in and you'll get directed to the right person, so. Anyone, anyone who's got a passion for the city, please don't be quiet.
Great. Thank you very much. General business, anything? No? Okay. Councilmember Schwer?
Yeah, I attended Sweetie's opening of their coffee shop. I encourage everyone to go down there. They're open Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the coffee shop itself is. I think it's, so far, it's a big hit. We have a bakery coming in over by the Knick Knack. I believe it's an auction, Knick Knack Auction, it's right next to Tracy Luther's Auction House. The bakery is to the left of that. I don't know what the opening date for that is, but keep an eye out. It's pretty exciting things going on in our city, and I encourage our citizens and staff to engage in some of these downtown excitement.
Bakery doesn't usually get by me, so I should be good. Councilmember Cole?
I too, it's at, on Saturday, went to Flyaway, the coffee shop behind Sweetie's. Go back there, it's awesome. There was, it was, it was, it's good to see a nice coffee shop open downtown, so. You know, make sure that you're spending your money local. Since I've got the powerhouse in the back row, I've got a couple questions. The sidewalk that is going in on 11th Avenue, is that a 2024 project?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Cole, I'm happy to be present to answer that question. That is a construction year 2024 project, so the grant was awarded late last year. And the update is, we finished the design. One of the requirements of the grant is to certify the right-of-way. I'm waiting for confirmation from Ramsey County. But it appears as if in 1970, when the properties on the north side of 11th Avenue were platted, those commercial properties, I'm talking about on the McKnight side, that the right-of-way and/or easement that should be there was never recorded. So there's a little bit of a pause and/or cleanup opportunity, or requirement, really, to be able to spend those grant dollars. So I'm kind of right at the edge of getting confirmation that, in fact, the right-of-way needs to be updated, and so we will be contacting those property owners. And, you know, for the benefit of having a sidewalk added, which will increase hopefully property value and foot traffic to their commercial businesses, hopefully we can get those easements drawn up and dedicated, and then once that step is done, then we can move forward with bidding on the project.
Thank you. Next question in the same area. Snow removal on said sidewalk, is the commercial property, that's why I said I got the powerhouse in the back row. Snow removal on the back, um, snow removal on the commercial property, I assume falls on the owner of the commercial property? The lake portion to Ariel will fall upon the city?
Or is it all city?
Or, somebody's got to shovel it. It's all city?
Yeah.
Yes. So, so the new 11th Avenue sidewalk you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's what it gets in. Yes, it will fall on the city.
Okay.
But we have designed a boulevard in there, so it's not right on the road. So, we will hopefully, yeah, we have some snow storage there, because that's a main road that we pawled multiple times.
Right.
So, it would add a whole bunch of extra work. This will give us a buffer in there to take care of that.
Perfect. This leads me up to, now that I got you both up here.
So, so I don't know how I, how I suggest this, but I think the sidewalk going down 11th Avenue is awesome. I mean, the amount of people that I watch walk across the street, from the bus stop, et cetera. But the number of people that I see cross in that dirt path, from 13th to 11th, ends up down by the pump station, down by the bus stop. There's also one or two park benches in that area. one or two park benches in that area. What do we talk to about finding an extra asphalt to lay a sidewalk back there? If you're already going to be back there clean in snow. And we increased the width of 13th to accommodate additional foot traffic. That's the only place to cross between Ariel and McKnight. I didn't bring a map, sorry.
I know what you're talking about.
I mean, I don't know who we talked to, how we, what we do to bring it up for consideration.
By that pond?
I don't think you got the right guys. Yeah, on the west side, on the west side of the pond.
Who owns the pond? We?
We do.
Okay.
We own the land. The watershed district is responsible for the pond maintenance.
Okay.
But we got park benches along that dirt track.
Yes, and I don't know when they got put in. I've seen those there. I can tell you, we can look into it and see what that would, what that would take.
And based off of sitting through budgetary conversation, I mean, it's an ask, not a, it's a want, not a need.
Sure.
But if we're going to do all of that, in my opinion, that's the only piece that's missing, is I see families pulling their, you know, pushing their strollers or pulling their wagons through there, because it's the only cutoff in between.
Yep. Something we can look at.
Thank you both.
All right. You're welcome.
With that, I'm done.
Thank you. Any else you want to pull up? We're doing good. All right. Like to, for general business, like to thank Public Works for putting the sign up for North St. Paul down by Silver Lake and the area coming in. It's good to see that again, so, well, that's fine. Yeah, well, it's good to see our, see our sign back up again, so appreciate that. And if there's nothing else, I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
So move. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Cole. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.